It's six o'clock and we'll call the meeting to order if you'll please rise for the pledge and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And since I don't see Reverend Harshburn, we're gonna call Mr. Kovier.
Good evening. I wanted to read a quote from the Book of Micah. It says, "And what does the Lord require of you? To act justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with your God." So tonight I ask that Lord, you would help us to act justly and love mercily, mercy, excuse me, and walk humbly with you so we can make wise decisions on behalf of our citizens and dedicated employees. Amen.
Thank you. Mike, if you'll take the roll call, please.
All right. Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schlack.
He's running late.
Councilman Valeris has asked to be excused. Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Pro Tem Lally.
Yes.
Treasurer Armstrong.
Here.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Excuse me. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 10 meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Move on to organizational business. This evening, I'm going to start out with a proclamation for our treasurer, who, as everyone knows, is going to retire again. It's getting to be a habit here, right? As everyone knows, Maureen is not running for treasurer, and I thought it was fitting that we recognize her service to our community.
Hear, hear.
Thank you. Well, proclamation recognizing 22 years of service with the city of Allen Park, Maureen Armstrong. Whereas Maureen Armstrong is retiring as treasurer after 22 years of service to the city of Allen Park, and whereas she began her career when appointed as deputy treasurer with the city in 1996 and served in that capacity until 2006 when she retired, and whereas she was elected city treasurer in 2011 and successfully ran for treasurer each successive term, last being elected to the position in 2019. And whereas during her tenure as treasurer, she regularly completed all the requirements to be a Michigan-certified professional treasurer through the Michigan Municipal Treasure Association and was knowledgeable and familiar with laws related to tax payments, tax captures, and allocations. And whereas in the course of her duties, she introduced new methods for individuals to pay their taxes and other bills and fees, including electronic automatic payments for property taxes. And whereas, in addition to her treasurer duties, she brought the holiday spirit to City Hall by starting the practice of decorating for Christmas and fall and also organized an annual food drive for the gleaners, which, by the way, I kind of missed that not going on. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Gail McLeod, on behalf of the city of Allen Park and all of its elected officials, hereby recognize retiring treasurer Maureen Armstrong for her outstanding service and express our deepest appreciation for her dedication and commitment to the betterment of our community and extend to Maureen and her family our best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, to be affixed this 24th day of October 2023. Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
[applause]. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23 through the 31st, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. And whereas the city of Allen Park further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Allen Park does hereby proclaim October 23 through 31, 2023, as Red Ribbon Week and encourages its citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state. In witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, be affixed this 24th day of October 2023. And I will also add that our police department has initiated a number of programs to address this issue. It does reside in our community. There are resources available, and we should be very proud of the actions that they have taken and the programs that they have initiated to help our residents in need. Now, I'm hoping that we have our appointment in attendance. I would like a motion to appoint Allen Park Senior Anastasia Gradinaro to the Beautification Commission.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. If Anastasia is here, would you please come forward? Well, she was supposed to be here, and the Beautification Commission showed up to welcome her, so I will get a hold of her and have her contact you, Mike. Thank you. Now we will move on to the Administrator's Report.
Good evening, Mayor Council, residents of Allen Park. Kind of mixed this one up a little bit this time. Apparently Councilman Valeris likes to eat dessert before he eats the meal. It's the good stuff at the beginning, so we'll go with the good stuff today. City of Allen Park would like to congratulate Allen Park Police Sergeant Sean Harvey for graduating from the Eastern Michigan University School of Police Staff and Command Executive Leadership Program. The EMU School of Police Staff in Command is a 360-hour executive leadership program that consists of individual classes spread over nine months. The experience takes the officers beyond traditional operational methods and exposes them to strategic thinking and creative and innovative problem-solving, paving the way for further advancement to senior leadership positions within the department. The course is split into six major topic areas of leadership, planning and decision-making, human resource management, administering the police agency, critical situations in homeland security, and managing technology for public safety. I'd like to, on behalf of everybody here at the city of Allen Park, thank Sergeant Harvey for his commitment to improve the service to the residents of Allen Park. I had an opportunity to go to that graduation, and it's a big commitment of time from not only for Sergeant Harvey, but for his family as well, and he has three little ones. I think they're five, three, and 18 months. So a big commitment for his wife as well and the whole family as they go through that. But once again, congratulations on that. Graduation from that program is an outstanding program. I know we've had a number of police and fire go through that. Looking in the back, I think Chief O'Reilly has also gone through that program as well. It's a great program. Also want to congratulate the following employees who reached or will reach their milestone of years of service with the city of Allen Park. It's gonna be Alex Charbonneau. Alex Charbonneau, he's with the fire department, five years, that'll be October 29th. And Jason Pelty, also with the fire department, 10 years on November 11th. We have shred day coming up this Saturday. We're gonna be over here at the parking lot behind the Prestige Banquet Hall, Culver's, Canse Bank. We're gonna be there from 9:00 to 12:00. Come on out. I think the weather's supposed to be decent with a possibility of some rain, but no need to get out of your car. Pull up, we'll get it out of the car if you need. Bring as much as you have. I really like just get it out of the houses, and I know that, you know, an opportunity to shred old documents. Here it is, if you're looking for that. Lady Christmas Parade, that's gonna be held on Friday, November 17th, starting at 6:30. Once again, I know we've announced this a couple of different times, but we're gonna have an open house celebrating the community center's 20th anniversary. That'll take place on November 29th. There'll be a brief ceremony prior to the Allen Park varsity Jaguars hockey game, and they're gonna be playing Birmingham United. I apologize. Birmingham Unified. Sounds like some kind of soccer program of some sort. The DDA Holiday Market will take place at the community center on December 1st, and it's gonna be from, it's a Friday from 3:00 to 7:00. We had some good news came through today. This is a project that was awarded back in May when we did the budget for this current fiscal year, and that's gonna be Holbrook Roofing is gonna start the Charlie Brown Building Roof on Monday. They had scheduled us to do this a lot earlier. Unfortunately, they were very busy with the tornado damage down in the South Wayne County area, so that kind of took them away from a lot of the projects and pushed us back a little bit. Also some great news, the landscaping by Dan Kays at the Brand Park Memorial and the Champagne Park Memorial that was completed yesterday. They may have a couple of little things to take care of, clean up a little bit more mulch here and there, but I think it looks really good. Really fun to see a project that came to design on my kitchen table, was sent over to the grant application for the CN Rail American Bloom, actually come to fruition in reality out there at the both memorial sites. So always fun to see something like that. Reek Road Reconstruction Project, Reek Road is still closed between Goddard and Allen Road, except for local traffic. The contractor continues to work on the concrete replacement between Goddard and Malon. That's the plan, to get that area addressed by the end of this construction season, and then we'll come back next year to do the Malon to Moore and then more to the rest of, towards Wick Road and get that project completed in 2025. I'm sorry, 2024. And finally, Concrete Sectioning Program, that is Savone Cement. They're working on Belfour Avenue between Ekor Road and Philomene Avenue and Buckingham between Ekor and Philomene as well, and they'll be wrapping up their season with utility repairs throughout the city and then also some small sectioning areas that we have remaining. But they'll be wrapping up here in the next couple of weeks as we get out of the construction season and into the winter season, unfortunately. Except for Councilman Valeris, who loves the winter time.
It's a good thing he's not here because we'd be hearing him complaining about the temperature.
Certainly.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Administrator, accept and file the Administrator's Report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Blevins. Comments and questions, please? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Will first carry. Come to public comments. Public may come up and speak for formance. All we ask is that you give your name and the street on which you live. Do not provide us with the full address. The only other thing is that we ask that your comments be civil and respectful.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Here on your last regularly scheduled meeting and on the heels of the election, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you. Thank you for your service to this great city of ours. We may not always agree on every issue, but I'm sincerely grateful for your service to the city. Lastly, I wanted to give my sincere condolences to Chief Egan at this time of loss. If you haven't heard, those of you listening, the chief lost his stepmother recently, and she was quite a lady. She was a Detroit police officer, one of the first female police officers in the '70s, graduated from the University of Michigan. And unfortunately, due to the struggles of MS, she had to retire early. But prayers to Chief Egan and his family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you lower the mic, Mike?
Wait, Magic?
Philomene Street and up and down Park Avenue for the last 30 years, decorating, giving you some optical stimulation. Few items that are happening in the city this week, and it wasn't touched upon, and I'll probably miss some, but on Friday night, the Allen Park Presbyterian Church and the DDA are having a trunk-or-treat on Friday night, and I think the street will be closed there. Then on Saturday, the full moon on Park Avenue in the theater parking lot, and I want to thank DPS, Parks and Rec, the police department, and I'm going to miss a few. Saturday night, we'll have 10th Street Tuesday entertaining you for your hearing pleasure from 6:00 until 10:00 or so, and it's B-Y-O-Boo! And there'll be refreshments inside the Elks Lodge. That's Saturday. Sunday's Arrest Day. Monday, Angels Night, the Raiders invade Detroit, and the Elks Club will be having refreshments for you and watch the game there. Then on Tuesday, the Allen Park Elks presents our 35th Pumpkin Patch. It's an Ojive. It's the Allen Park Elks Pumpkin Patch with great assistance from all the departments, and I thank you, everyone. And I want to thank the residents of the city. My pumpkin pickers over the last 20 years that have went to the village, the Henry Ford, and it's a win-win situation where they don't have to get them, and the weather depends on how they mature. We're doing quite well this year. There are no rats, again, never have been. We try to maintain it, so your optical stimulation is there, the stage is being set, inside the Elks on Halloween night. The list is growing of special needs. Yes, we're past 80 and growing. And again, I want to thank you for letting the Allen Park Elks host this event in our city, our great city. We put a lot of time and effort into this, and we need more members. We're getting older, and feel free to come in the lodge, and you'll find out that we do more things that you don't know about. The different commissions, the DDA has helped me on this. I hope the Festivities Commission can assist me. Quite a few sponsors. If you looked over the list, it is impressive, and it's growing now. I think you've all seen it, and it continues to grow. And I'll end it there, because I have more work to do to get the stage set so that y'all can come on down and have a good time. This is gonna be a long weekend in Allen Park, and thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you.
[applause].
I live on Ray Street. I got something. We have a numerous amount of vacant walls where the old theater was at, and if we could have the students have a commission or so on that to go around and maybe make bureaus on here with the councils checking in on it all the time to see how they're doing so they'll have something of Allen Park from '27 till now. And the schools would be the high school, Cabrini, Riley, and, not Riley, yeah, Riley, and what's called the Baptist Church, too, inner city. And they, the students would do all the work and have some work, basically of the, maybe some art teachers to give them some ideas or stuff like this, but the students themselves would be doing all the work and getting everything done and that. And I think for supplies-wise, I think the business people would cut a couple bucks here and there, basically, to do the work on that. I think it would be a good thing, the one wall's at the theater, and the other wall, I know it belongs to Ford Motor Company, but over there on the other side of the railroad tracks, those people there look at a big cement wall. And if they would put something over there, if they don't want to put anything, make like a forest on the walls, you know, so it looks like the old woods in there, basically, and stuff like this and that. So, but another thing is, I hear you guys greatly in here, be at home now. Bye now.
Thank you.
That's what happens when you have a craniotomy 25 years ago. On Sunday, there's a trunk-or-treat at Allen Park High School.
Thank you.
Good night.
Hi, Nancy Nick, Pinecrest Avenue. So, good evening. I'm here tonight as the chair of the Historical Museum, and we'd just like to thank Councilman Blevins for the past four years of all the work that he has done. I know it hasn't always been easy, but the countless bottle caps that you have taken the inserts out of and counted with me, the times that we've decorated with the lights outside. Every time I call him, he's like, what do you need? He's donated the ice cream for the ice cream socials, so this is just a token to say thank you. We appreciated you. We're gonna miss you, and we're also gonna miss you, my council.
[applause].
Open it up.
[laughing].
It sounds like a fight.
Good evening, City Council Mayor Ray Mcgusson-Quant. I too would like to thank Charles for everything he has done. You know, it's not easy. It's not easy for none of you. I want to thank you all. And Maureen Armstrong, I'd like to thank you for all your years of service. You know, you have to listen to us sometimes coming up. A lot of us come up here with some great ideas, and you guys look into them to say, wow. So the last couple of months, I've been coming up here, and I've been talking about these hotels. I did a little bit of investigation today. Right now, you have 752 rooms, and that's between these three hotels up here and the two that are down a long expressway. I talked to the individuals. On average, during the week, they are 50% occupied. On the weekend, they're 100%. The long-term stay or extended stay hotel over here, right now, is over 95% filled right now. Those are contractors that come in here. Those are the contractors that are working on the roads. There are the contractors that are working for Ford Motor Company. There are the contractors that are working on the bridge, so they're here for long-term. I looked at some numbers, and these are just numbers. I went ahead and said $2 a day per hotel room is $1,504. I mean, 1,500 rooms a day. 300 times 365, that comes up to $548,960. That's only at $2 bucks. That's what I started off with. But like I says, I had my little treats, and I found out, wow, they're charging more than some other places. If you went ahead and charged them $3, it's $823,44. My heavens. You guys can do it a lot, but I'm looking for this money to really be used for what is, I believe, should be intended, for us citizens, to pay for taking care of what is really needed. This is not to go ahead and pay for contracts. This is not really needed to pay for roads. This is really looking at, maybe to start to pay down some of our debt. So is this something to look at? You know, I want to, and with that, I want to thank you all. Boy, where'd the four years go? You know, that's even getting scary for me to look at four, where'd the four years go? But with that, I want to thank you very much. You have a great day. Stay safe, and go Lions.
Sir Walter Scott said, "Oh, what a tangled web we weave when first we practiced to deceive you." That's a quote in the public domain. I'd like to quote a few other things in the public domain. "Hi all, I went to fix a fellow candidate's sign today. I later replaced it with a fresh peg. The candidate's sign is in place. I apologize for my behavior. This is not an excuse. Sorry for losing your friendship. I have hurt everyone with this, including my marriage. I am not asking for forgiveness, just that I did a very bad thing. I'm feeling horrible and wish everyone the best." Several hours later, maybe a day later, same thing was posted with some changes. He said, "I hurt my family and my wife and family. I am ashamed. I am feeling very horrible and wish everyone the best. The worst came out of me, and I will be making a big decision in two days." Thank you. Then comes iteration number three. You see the tangled nature of this web we're weaving? "Hi all," same starting point. Now he is, "I am asking for forgiveness." First two, "I'm not asking for forgiveness." He does mention the word apology in both the first two, and in fact, the third, but what he misses is that in order to get forgiveness, that's something you do for yourself. To apologize is to direct it to the injured parties, in this case, Mr. Estimer and Mr. Lally. In fact, so tangled is this web we've woven that Mr. Schlack only acknowledged a second person had been injured when he says, "I did some damage to another sign" in the second or third iteration. How is that an apology when you skip one of the victims? And how is it an apology when you don't mention them by name? Yeah, forgiveness, forgiveness, forgiveness. I'll take all the forgiveness you can give me, but I'll be darned if I'm gonna apologize because that takes genuine remorse. Now, then, we have him come to this meeting recently, and he says, "Recently, I did something out of frustration." Well, how is it out of frustration if you went to do a solid for your friend by fixing his sign? I don't get that. What's frustrating about that? You said you went to fix the sign, but you're ashamed of doing what you said you were doing for a friend. "I did something out of frustration. I am ashamed and acted with feeble judgment," whatever that means. "No excuses for my actions. I am asking for forgiveness." Now, I'm a word guy. Maybe it's because I went to law school. Words are important. "I am asking for forgiveness to my colleagues." What does that mean exactly? From my colleagues? Of my colleagues? Both prepositions? Both prepositions? To my colleagues? That doesn't make sense. I say it's disingenuous. Maybe it's a lack of literacy, lack of intellect, I don't know. But to me, I first read it as you're asking somehow for the council to forgive you. I don't, I don't, I don't know what it meant. My focus off, and finally, he comes out with the topper where he throws his wife and children into the mix. And I have a hard time imagining any of the decent, good people of Allen Park threatening his wife, who by every indication is a wonderful person, or his children. Who is gonna threaten them? That, my friends, sounds to me like victimhood. And I don't know if he suffers from sociopathy.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hayes, your time is up.
But I think, and I pray.
Mr. Hayes.
That the Ethics Committee rules on this forthwith. Thank you.
There's no others coming up for public comments. We will close that section and move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of claims and accounts in the payroll report. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Merkel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Come to resolutions, the first one being a resolution to approve waiving the city bid process as there is no economic benefit to rebid the street sectioning program contract and utility repair program contract and approve the offer from Savonie Cement to extend their 2023 contract pricing to the 2024 construction season. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Mr. Murray will fill us in.
Hello. This is for extending this contract one more season to next year for Mr. Savoni and Savoni Cement Incorporated. They do a very good job for the city. They have been for many years. They're very good at taking care of our residents when complaints or problems happen. Their quality is second to none. We've had that from many different engineers, not just our own, that have told us that. We seem to get Mr. Savoni and his company here where other cities are vying for his work and we'd like to keep him here.
I agree with you. His work is fantastic. He's fast, he's polite, he takes care of the residents, I've seen it. I think this is the right decision.
Any other comments?
I know Mario for a long time and he does excellent work from the day he started until now. And he's doing better now than he ever did before. He did a nice job on those memorials, my man, beautiful.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Second resolution is to approve the fire department to remount one Braun Express Plus Type One ambulance at a cost of $244,638,000 with funds from their account. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Chief O'Reilly.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to request approval to purchase a remount kit for Alpha 51, which is our 2017 ambulance. It's a Braun. This service would to be to take the aluminum box off the current chassis, refurbish the box and the components inside, place that back onto a new chassis. That process would take approximately two years to complete.
Good thing we plan ahead.
We are moving from a diesel engine to a gas engine. There is some reduction in cost and maintenance. That's all been approved by our head mechanic.
So we do have another ambulance just in case, right?
Yes, so we currently run two frontline ambulances and then we have a spare ambulance. So when this one finally does go out of service in about a year and a half, it takes about four to six months to complete the actual remount service, we'll bring our reserve ambulance in, so we'll still be able to maintain two frontline ambulances.
We still have one out on loan?
We do. Why not? Fire Department, their ambulance was hit twice within a three-day period, so it is out of service. They asked if they could borrow ours for as long as possible until they can get theirs back. They do not have a reserve, so we allowed them to borrow it. If we ever need it back because one of ours goes down, they'll bring it back immediately. I believe we'll be back here in a short time with a full ambulance purchase as well. Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution three is to approve the early voting resolutions starting in 2024. Motion, please.
Motion.
I'm sorry, I had a motion from Mr. Blevins, second by Mr. Lloyd. And we will get an explanation from Mr. Mizzi.
All right. It's, if you read the resolution, it's pretty much the city of Allen Park, mayor and council accepts that we are gonna follow Michigan election law. That is literally what it means. And that is just like, this is step one for grant money. Again, I want to get through November of this year, then we'll jump into 2024. But we will be having nine-day early voting and you need separate equipment from what goes to the polls and the equipment is in chief. And we got all our newer equipment from grant money. So all we have to do is this and we're up for a grant and there's like a 90% chance we're gonna get it. So they, they are finally releasing a lot of money for new voting equipment after everything in the past. Not just in four years, but everyone remembers 2020 and, and beyond. So, and in the old days, every city was on their own to do their own election. You know, like a city, when I first started, we had punch card while some, and that was high technology in the eighties, you know? Some cities were still doing paper ballots because that's all they could afford, so I'm not gonna talk much more about it. A lot will be coming out after the November election if I'm reelected. But, but yeah, but no, it's generally just, I know a lot of it seemed redundant because it's state law, but this is just step one of giving grant money and so.
Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution's approved. Now I need a motion to convene into a closed session to discuss pending litigation.
Motion.
Support.
That was Mr. Lally.
Do you want to do that now or after?
Well, let's sequence, we can approve it and then do the comments.
Well, when you approve it, you're actually gonna like convene it to.
All right.
Comments in the chat.
We'll scratch that because we are going to closed session and people probably will not be hanging around till we exit. We will do council comments at this point. And this evening, we will start with Mr. Lloyd.
Thank you, Mayor. First, just thank you everybody for coming out, I appreciate it. This is the last council meeting that the senior government students can get credit for the quarter, so I would encourage all my colleagues to be long-winded with their comments, for the procrastinators in the room, all right? So that they can just soak up the democratic process. I, I think that democracy is something that's been on a lot of people's minds lately. My dad, he was a government teacher here for a long time. He adopted the slogan, "Democracy is not a spectator sport." Just bought brand-new t-shirts to say it and it's something that I spent a lot of time reflecting on and thinking about. And it is deeply important and personal to me because democracies don't happen by accident. They are something that are very intentionally maintained by people that are making a concerted effort to do so. And it's the people that are sitting in this room, not just the elected officials, but everybody that's chosen to come here on a Tuesday evening to witness the act of government happening, the act of democracy happening. I'm gonna start with my appreciation for our, our city treasurer, Maureen Armstrong, and her 22 years of service. She's not only an amazing treasurer, but she's also an amazing neighbor, her and her husband Jim. But here in Allen Park, for the last decade plus, we have had the extreme luxury of not having to think about the office of treasurer. Like that, that is, that is a true luxury because we've had somebody that is highly competent, that has gone out of her way, nothing, she, as an elected official, she did not need to go out and, and do those extra trainings or make that extra effort. She did that on her own because this is an important job to her and this city's important to her. And, and, and that is something that's absolutely crucial. To, to our city clerk, who hopefully he gets reelected, all right, he just has to vote for himself and I think that he'll be good, one vote, that's it. But the fact that, you know, in 2020, we saw that there was a concerted assault on our, our democracy and people were saying that there was corruption. And, and the thing is, is that we have individuals like Mike Mizzi around the country that are running these elections in their own cities, that, that are, are making that effort. He's gonna have, in a couple of weeks here, he's gonna bring all those, those officials in here, those people that are volunteering, they're, they're getting compensated, but they are doing that, that act. So we, we are truly fortunate for them. To our commissioners, who are, are truly volunteering, our beautification committee that is in the back, that is truly volunteering because they want to make this a beautiful place, not just for themselves, but for their families, for the, the kids that are gonna grow up in this city, that spend countless hours going to meetings, volunteering, spending time to make this a beautiful place. To all the candidates that are making an effort to, to, to run and, and go through the numerous pains that go through that because they want this to be a, a good place to live. I have to close by talking about one, one person in particular that's not on the ballot and that, and that's Mr. Blevins. Over the last four years, I, I've had the extreme pleasure of, of, of working side-by-side with Mr. Blevins and, and he is one of those people that has taken that, that comment, "Democracy is not a spectator sport," truly to heart. He learned those lessons, the same lessons, sat in that same class that our high school seniors are sitting in, and, and he, he made that effort continually. I, I believe ran three times? Twice, all right? And, and has served this, the city thanklessly. And I am just truly honored to have had the opportunity to sit up here with, alongside him. To the young people that are in the audience, some of which are my former students, I would encourage you, it doesn't need to be running for council, all right? But, but give back to your community in some way because this is not an accident. If you, if you like the city that you live in, if you like the fact that you have parks that you can go to, if you like the fact that you have streets that are paved, that, that you can, you know, do wheelies down Park Avenue, which I prefer that if you not do that anymore, but, but it, it, it doesn't happen by accident. So, so find, find someplace that you can contribute, find someplace that you can take part. I'm very appreciative of everybody that's here, I'm very appreciative of all the people that have made an effort to continue to make this a great place to, to live, to work, to live, and thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to apologize for my tardiness, I had a personal emergency I had to deal with. Wanted to read a statement that I wrote. "My name is Gary Schleck. Citizens of Allen Park, apart from my role as husband and father, serving you has been the greatest honor and privilege of my life. I have a strong history of proudly serving our community and our country, starting first as a soldier in the United States Army. I've apologized and asked for forgiveness, both private and publicly, and doing so again. Regret what I did, but I will say that the whole story is not out there. Those who see what they see or hear what they, or don't get the complete picture, I'm welcome to share that with you. I'm not saying my actions were right, I will never say they were right, they were wrong. But if you don't get the full picture, are you right? But I'm actively engaged in our community. I've been a member of St. Francis Cabrini Parish. I dedicated time serving the Knights of Columbus and been a member of the Autism Alliance of Michigan. Last couple of weeks have been tough. Much of this story, like I said, is not known. This past week, I've been called many things, but one thing has stood out with me, the stomper. I'm making it clear that I'm not stopping out or resigning, but I'm happy today to see that we have an English professor in the house. Many citizens and organizations, including our own dedicated Allen Park Fire Department, have shown their support. In fact, I've earned their endorsement. I think they see me for what I am and know that I'll be there for them and not just wave patiently to see if a pink slip might be waved in front of their face. You know, their recognition, their dedication and their well-being is what makes me want to keep going. And I want to work to stop out injustice, stomp out bad deals, like the misguided movie of studio contracts that left us with the current debt exceeding $29 million that we still have to pay. It left our cities voiceless and under emergency management. We gotta stop out ego, self-promotion and focus on our city. I see too much of that this past six months. Let's focus on our city. Let's stop out any hindrance that's hindering our fire department, police department. Let's stop out the old boys' club that still want to hang around and not see change in our city. We want to be the city of the future, we need to do it now, not keep letting these old boys keep going. Let's stop out organizations that hide behind what other cities are doing instead of promoting Allen Park. Let's promote Allen Park. Allen Park is a great city and transparency is important. Transparency applies openness and communication, creates accountability between Allen Parks and the government. As your councilman, I will ensure it remains that way. Public engagement enhances government and impacts the quality of decisions made by council and when knowledge is widely dispersed, we all benefit. And in our city, we are fortunate to have great citizens and a great group of people serving as mayor and council member. They take the time to read what has been presented and listen carefully to their colleagues' opinion before voting. We're equally blessed to have a great group running for council. But most of all, I'm proud that our great citizens are backed by our great administration team, police department, fire department, city employees, who dedicate their life to make sure Allen Park is always in good hands. Yet, as the saying goes, those who live in glass houses shouldn't throw stones, but maybe it should be what my calf, Beavis, taught me. You do not forgive others their trespasses, neither will your father forgive your trespasses. It's through eating humble pie we come to understand others and ourselves. We have a lot of work still to do in Allen Park. We started that four years ago on this council and I'm ready, if fortunate, be elected, to continue that. That's what I'm focused on, on our city and making it right. I want you to know, you can always call me day or night and reach out to me, as I always have, with a website, email, numerous ways to reach out to me. And if I'm not answering that first phone call, I'm probably chasing a toddler around, but I'll be there to answer. You know, Allen Park, it's time to decide if we want a leader who takes ownership, eats humble pie, gives you the hard facts, or someone who just prefers the sugar court reality, make promises you can't fulfill. Let's bring out democracy, let's make it happen, Allen Park. Thank you.
Mr. Blevins.
First off, I, I want to make note for the minutes that Councilman Blevins will not be in the convene, closed session. I will be leaving for personal reasons before the, that meeting. So with that, usually I don't make a speech, but I made some bullet points, this being my last full meeting before the last meeting with everyone getting sworn in and stuff, I actually did put my two-week notice, even though it'll be three weeks, but first off, good luck to everyone. It, it's been 16 years, half of my life, I've been coming to these meetings since Richard Hubler was our mayor. Started coming when my brother was going, with his government class as well. I want to thank first off to all my govern, uh, social studies teachers, Ms. Varansky, Mr. Hoover, Mr. Riggs, Mr. Bannock, Mr. Berkey, Mr. Sott, and of course, Mr. Lloyd for all, everything that, and Mr. Powell, after he retired, I don't know how many times, but, but ever, because of them, they got me interested in government and, and just, it's been a pleasure seeing the city, being on both sides, talking in the podium, seeing these wonderful.
pleasure seeing the city, being on both sides, talking in the podium, seeing these wonderful, like, every day, like, the regulars with the residents and throughout the years. I encourage everyone to make sure you go out and vote. Why I say that is, as Councilman Lloyd, I ran two times. The first time, I lost by twelve votes. This last one, between me and Dennis, were eight votes. So, every vote matters in local government. People say, "Oh, the presidential elections are the important ones." No, your local government is, they're, the people up here represent you, they are the ones that take care of your ordinances, the ones that make sure your water is clean, make sure that we still have our public safety and that roads are fixed, the parks are clean, cut. It's, that's why it's important to vote for your local governments. I always, it's just a shame that it's always like a thirty percent turnout, but, or, it's just, but I encourage everyone, please go out and vote November seventh or get an absentee ballot. Please make sure you are respectful to the workers, they're there to just make sure your vote is counted. They don't care about, "Oh, well, vote this way, vote that, who should I vote for, blah, 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 blah." It's like, as a past worker, I, I've heard it, they just wanna make sure that your vote is casted. So, please be respectful on election day. To those who are running, good luck. To all the candidates, whether you're on the ballot or not, you're here to represent the residents. You're here for the residents. Work together and listen. You may not all agree, I know the last four years, I love when I hear, "Well, this council's the yes count." So, I can say over twenty times, "I voted no," so. It's not true. So, it, it's whether the motion passed or not, but I, I ran up here to, when I was younger, and they would have the Memorial Day Parade or the Homecoming Parade, and the mayor and the council would be in the cars waving down on champagne, and I'm like, "I wanna do that, I wanna be in a parade," even though that's not what I thought, and that's what I thought being on council was all about, but apparently not, there's a lot of things going on. But I wanted to bring fun, I wanted to bring someone that you can rely on and be your, and answer your questions, someone that you're, you can come to. Again, I can say I've have every meeting a different bowtie, every, so I have about a hundred bowties now, but it's just, it's one of those things where even like having, when I do the dad jokes, or just, you know, just bring for the, especially the younger generation to be able to feel welcome for government, because when I was younger, I always thought, "Oh, it's like C-SPAN, oh, boring kind of thing, senators and all that stuff." But, you know, I'm so pleased to work with this group for the last four years, having so many memories. And we've went through so much with COVID and the Zoom calls, making sure that, "Is everyone online? Can you hear me?" And being in my, my bedroom, trying to be in the corner and then trying to make sure that, like, with my family, making sure that, like, they don't hear what's going on in the background and all that stuff, or seeing everyone's pets going on the camera, and there's just been so many fun memories. Some, someone asked me the other day, "What do you think is my biggest accomplishment on here for the last four years?" And there's been many things, I could, there's a lot of things I've done behind the scenes that people will never know, but one thing I've always wanted was a digital sign, and I'm so happy the library got a digital sign so that we can be more informed to the community. For being someone that, I always, I've had so many nicknames over the years and all that stuff as a councilman, and I would consider myself the fashion councilman with all the outfits and, you know, the people in the audience or at home, they can't see, but I always wear fun shoes. So, as I say, whoever gets in fifth place, they have big shoes to fill. And, because I know I did when, I know Mr. Harry Cisco was sitting here four years before me and stuff, and I know I had big shoes to fill with him and, and all the other council members from the past years. It, it has been such a remarkable learning experience. Some people ask, "Why am I not running again?" And there's many reasons, but one thing is I just need to take a break for a bit, and who knows, I might come back in the future, but I just wanna thank everyone, the department heads, the departments, the, this council of residents, those who, who, the, the department that cleans City Hall, everyone says that, like, public safety is the biggest thing. Well, you know, those who clean the, like, the floors and stuff, gotta make sure there's toilet paper in the restrooms and stuff, so they're always the heroes as well. But I just wanna thank everyone for being very respectful as, because it could've gone either way, especially for being an openly gay man, and I know I, know I made a difference and I just, again, it's been such a remarkable four years, and as always, God bless, stay positive. Thank you.
I think I speak for everybody when I say we were really gonna miss you. He has definitely made an impact on this. I don't even know, I was just so enthralled with what he was saying. Between Dan and Charles, you know, they're talking, Charles, you, you have no idea what he brings to this council unless you sit in with everything, he brings a lot, and we're gonna miss that. Dan speaks of democracy not being a spectator sport, and I think when he says that, it, it's so accurate. And I think when I, when I, when I first got on this, on the council two years ago, I had no idea what was going on, clueless, and these guys really helped me out, they, they worked with me, they taught me things. The department heads were fantastic, they put up with all of my questions because they know anything. So, they understood that, they, they were very, very good about helping me out and understanding what's going on. This council has worked together very well and got a lot of good things done. I don't, and again, I don't think a lot of people see that, but I think if you look around the city, you'll notice it. The only thing that I, when I first came in, and I, I took a little flak, because every time my, my closing statement was, "I want more people to come to the meetings." And they're going, "Oh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't want enough." But it's still true. The more people that come to meetings, the better. I, I think we're, we're working our way there. I think the biggest thing that I was disappointed in, truly, was how many people had something to say but wouldn't step up to the plate. You can say things, but if you're not gonna, if, if, if there's only six or seven people running for council, don't blame us. It's, you need to come on and do this too. This is, this is a, a job for any, any citizen. Any citizen who wants to get involved in the city, this is a great way to do it. The commissions are great, the commissioners that all work, they, they do this job for free because they love the city, and they're greatly appreciated, believe me, you have no idea. But I look to the, to the general population to step up and, and run. If, if you don't like what's going on, come on, please. I, I, like, last four years ago, twelve people ran. I was, I loved that. Everyone was asking me, "Do you wanna sign my petition?" I'll sign everybody's petition to run. I don't care, everybody, everybody's welcome to run. We want you here. So, being up here, working with these guys for two years, has really been quite a privilege. Great people to work with, department heads again, super. They make everything so easy to understand, even though they, every department has their own language, believe me, they do. Accounting has a language, DPS has a language, you know, everybody's got a different language, so you have to have, ask them to, please speak in, you know, layman's terms, so we understand things. So, again, thank you for all the department heads and all you guys up here, really appreciate the work you've done for, how, how you've helped me. I wanna get on with what's left. Mark Bailey, Elks Club, thank you guys for all the work you do, putting on this every year, it's a lot of work. Again, these are guys that care about the city, do this every year, put a lot of time and effort into it. I want, and I said this last time, and I'll reiterate what everybody else is saying, please get out and vote, please, get out and vote. It counts, it matters. Eight, eight votes between us. These races, and now, it's like, "Oh, we don't even have to worry because there's nobody running," but we've got write-in candidates, please consider the write-in candidates, they're out there, you can get information, you can get, find out who they are. We can't say it, but you can find out. Call me at home, I don't care. But again, I just, again, thanks to everybody for all the work that they've done, all the commissioners. It's really greatly, greatly appreciated. And my last thing that I wanna say, there are two things. First of all, it's United Nations Day, the Charter for the United Nations was ratified this day in nineteen forty-five, and it's National Baloney Day. So, I had a baloney sandwich for lunch. Fried. It was good. That's all, thank you very much, I appreciate you all coming, and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Lally.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanna congratulate Maureen Armstrong for twenty-two years of service here. It was a pleasure working with you all along.
Same here.
Good woman. A good treasurer, best. And so, also, I wanna thank Mark Ba- Bailey for the pumpkin patch, he does good work every year with there, very nice. And I wanna thank the Allen Park Sergeant Harvey for graduating from the Eastern Michigan University School of Police Staff of Command and Leadership Program. I also wanna give my condolences, my wife, my, my wife, my family, condolences to Chris Hegan for losing his stepmother. And I wanna thank, thank for all the people that came here tonight. I would like to thank the police and fire department, and all the department heads of the city employees who work hard every day to make this city a jewel of Dunn River. I also would like to give a heartfelt thank you to, to the residents and voters of Allen Park that allowed me to serve my community as former councilman, mayor, mayor pro tem again. If I am given the honor to serve as the elected mayor of Allen Park, I will work hard to continue to move this city forward with transparency and your input. I would appreciate your vote of support. I look forward to serving this great community for another four years. Good luck to all of the candidates up here, good night and God bless. Don't forget to vote November the seventh or before. Thank you.
It's been a while since I've been here, so.
So, you're gonna catch up for all the way.
No, I won't do that, I won't, I'll be short and sweet.
Talk about taxes.
Yeah, yeah, I won't have to say that anymore. Thank you, Gail, for the proclamation, and thank you to all the residents who supported me over the last twelve years. The last few weeks have been very humbling for me. I, I've gotten a lot of calls from people thanking them and, and wishing me well, and I truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Congratulations, Maureen, there was only one treasurer better than you, and that was Kathy Gabe. That's her sister. God bless. I'm not a jerk, no. So, thank you for your years of service and it's, when did your father start working for the city? What year was that?
Probably in the fifties.
So, thank you, thank you for all the, all the years of service for your family. Now, remember to vote November seventh, everybody's sold the pitch, so I'll give the details, but not too many. All precincts will be located at the community center, so if you try to go to your normal precinct for this election, you're gonna read the sign and it's gonna tell you to go to the community center. Postcards are going out as a reminder, there's still time for any of the high school students who are gonna be eighteen on or before Election Day, you can register to vote. Even if you forget, that's the beauty of the new laws, is you can come in on Election Day and say, "I'd like to register and vote and vote," just try not to do that. This election, okay, but November, big ones, it's, you're gonna wait in line a lot longer than you would at the precincts. We do have two write-in candidates officially as of today at four-thirty. When you go to vote and you ask the workers for the names, they are not permitted by law to give you those names, okay? They're not being rude, they're not playing political, it's just their job is just to educate you on the process. So, real quick, you'll see on the ballot, vote for not more than six, which means you could vote one, you could vote none, you could vote up to six, just no more than six. There will be blank lines under, that is where, if you read the directions, the write-in is, and you make sure you fill in the oval like you would. And again, they are registered write-ins. So, if you go in there thinking, "I wanna get my name on the results," those days ended twenty years ago, so. And yet, they actually, I, I would look through old results and they have to give votes to Donald Duck and Mickey Mouse. If your name, you know, that was crazy, but. No, we do have two registered, so you could check Allen Park campaign stuff, I don't know where, but, or you could call the clerk's office on Election Day or before, and we will tell you who they are. We will give you no other information other than that. Now, a number one question I'm getting is, do you have to spell the names right? No, you don't. In Michigan, there's a Court of Appeal opinion that if you, if a reasonable person could look at and sound out the name in many variations, then you're good to go. It's not my office that will be tallying those votes, well, we'll, we'll be keeping track of them, but they're actually certified down at Wayne County with the Board of Canvassers, so. Enough about that. Just remember to vote November seventh, and again, right after November seventh, we're gonna be jumping into the presidential primary election and a lot of stuff is gonna change there. So, there's just a lot more voter accessibility. But again, let's get through November seventh, talk to me November tenth, okay? Thank you all for coming out, good luck to all the candidates, God bless you, good night, and the citizens.
Thank you. I will keep this brief. It's always impressive to see the number of employees we have who get extra training. We've had so many of our firefighters and our police go through staff and command, it's, it's quite impressive and speaks very highly, I think, of the workforce that we have. And certifications and training extends into other departments too, including our DPS. Like many others here, I think serving on council is a learning experience, but every one of these individuals who ran for office brought something to the table. It wasn't as though they were not knowledgeable in certain areas. They brought that knowledge and they contributed to the betterment of this community. What they had to learn was how government operates. The fact that sometimes you would like things to happen more quickly than they do, but anyone in government will tell you that it's a very slow grind. This council had to go through a number of changes, some of This council had to go through a number of changes, some of them rather unfortunate, but we all adapted. And I will say that this council worked very well together. There's differing opinions, they may not be out here on the floor, but there were numerous discussions that would occur. I have various thoughts that cross my mind. One of them is, if you think that councils who, or any government entities, who always seem to be in disagreement or arguing, are really doing their job because they are dysfunctional, you are very mistaken. There is nothing wrong with having a group of people who can sit, ask questions, and discuss, and come to agreement, because the bottom line is, it's for the betterment of every resident in this community. You can look around this state, and you can go to other communities, and you will see councils who seem to be continually at each other's throats. And you need to ask yourselves, just what are they accomplishing? Just how are they serving their residents and their community? Just what good are they doing, other than being argumentative? There's plenty of discussions that have gone on. There's times when people haven't agreed. We've got subcommittees where subcommittee discussions go on. But in the end, one of the key factors is to listen, to listen with an open mind, and to listen to someone else's opinion, and to sometimes step aside and say, I never considered that. Or if I were that person, how would what I'm saying appear to be? It has been a pleasure to work with every one of these individuals who have brought something different and unique to this council. I'm not quite sure how to express how I feel about Charles. I have told him personally, but he has been a treasure. This young man knows so much about government because he came and he paid attention, and he absorbed. He is a very objective, decisive individual, and he will be very much missed, but as I told him, I know where he lives, and I know how to reach out to him. But again, every one of these individuals, it has been a pleasure working with each and everyone, because you all brought something different to the table, and you all had a different perspective, which I respect. And with that, I will now call for a motion for a closed session.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd, and we require a roll call vote.
All right, Madam Mayor. I have a motion by Protem Lally, supported by Councilman Lloyd, to convene and to close session to discuss pending litigation, the 2018 basement flooding. As permitted under MCL 15.268E, shall we convene? Councilman Blavins.
No.
Councilman Lally.
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd.
Yes.
Councilman Marcos.
Yes.
Mayor McLeod.
Yes.
And Councilman Schleck.
Yes.
And for the record, Councilman Blavins did state he will not be entered. Okay, he will be excused from the closed session. We have passed, we will convene in the room that's behind us.
Thank you.
Will we come back?